I am a Christian, I am a Christian, I am a Christian. I am a Christian, I am a Christian, I am a Christian. I am a Christian, I am a Christian, I am a Christian. I am a Christian, I am a Christian, I am a Christian. I am a Christian, I am a Christian, I am a Christian. I am a Christian, I am a Christian, I am a Christian. I am a Christian, I am a Christian, I am a Christian. I am a Christian, I am a Christian, I am a Christian. I am a Christian, I am a Christian, I am a Christian. I am a Christian, I am a Christian, I am a Christian. I am a Christian, I am a Christian, I am a Christian. I am a Christian, I am a Christian, I am a Christian. I am a Christian, I am a Christian, I am a Christian. I am a Christian, I am a Christian, I am a Christian. I am a Christian, I am a Christian, I am a Christian.
I am a Christian, I am a Christian, I am a Christian. I am a Christian, I am a Christian, I am a Christian. I am a Christian, I am a Christian, I am a Christian. I present this on my behalf of the President. Today, I am here to present my testimony. I am here.
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 I am here today. I am here today, President of the House of Representatives. I am here today, President of the House of Representatives. About our next speaker, President of the House of Representatives. Before we begin, I would like to introduce the President of Assad. Anarastin Association of Arab Unionists. Paris and Paris, Abu Dhabi, Abu Dhabi, Abu Dhabi. And I said, I am here, I am here. I am here, I am here. I am here today, I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. Good morning, my goodness. I am here today, I am here today. 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 Today, I am here today. I am here 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 today, I am here today.
I am here today, I am here today.
I am here today, I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. That is a wrong song. And they have a secret song. You go on there, come, we will do it all over again. I am here today, I am here today. 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 The National President of Assad, sorry. I am here today, I am here today. 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 Who I know, I am here today. Who I know, who I know. I am here today, I am here today. 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 I am here today, I am here today.
Um, I am here. I am here today, I am here today. 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 So, I am here today, I am here today. 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 You go on this. She finds it, oh God. We are here today, we are here today. I am here today, I am here today. Oh, I am here today, I am here today. I am here today. Oh, I am here today, I am here today. 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 The position alone. Political and religious freedom. Of whom we, okay, but. Can you not give them what is the right condition? I am here today, I am here today. My goodness, my goodness, I am always at the service. Um, come on, let me get it. Come on, let me get it, yeah. I am here today, I am here today. Uh, come on, let me get it. Uh, I am here today, I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. Uh, that's it, you know, we didn't know, we didn't know. But it was here, it was here. I am here today, I am here today. We are here today, we are here today. Who we, I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. But I am here today, I am here today. 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 I am here today, I am here today.
You go on this. Yeah.
I am here today, I am here today.
I am here today, I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. I am here today. I am here today, 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 I am here today. I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. Uh, you are so good, uh, super. We are here today, uh, fine. I am here today, I am here today. There you go. I am here today. I am here today. The Chairman of the Commission. Look. I am here today.
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 Yes. I am here today, I am here today. We are here today, I am here today. I am here today. I am here today, I am here today.
This is my destiny. I am here today.
I am here today.
I am here today, I am here today. When you are in a church, in a church. But I am here, I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. My goodness, you go on this. I am here today. I am here today, 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 I am here today.
I am here today.
I am here today, I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. Mr. President of the Service.
I am here today.
I am here today.
I am here today.
I am here today.
You go. They are so cool. And when I was in there. They never wear a hat. Neither face. Neither mouth face. Although, here I am here. I am here today, I am here today. Neither she, or her father. I am here today, I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. I am not senatorial, I am here today, I am here today. Finally, let me tell you one more. Openly, you people are for. Come on, who also chose. I am here today, I am here today. Only nine or two. Just go to the air, I don't need to ever. I am here today, I am here today. And it's been a few. There will be several here, I don't need to ever. Oh, I am here, I am here today. Neither not senatorial district. Oh, very dear, I don't want to see. I am here today, I am here today. I am not senatorial. Reason. For our own, to our own. Even if I am here, I am here today. Now, everyone has to hear that. I check our idea, our ideas, our ideas. Our ideas. Oh, say it this way. Who is, who is, who is, who is still house in the past. Although that 2017. On your own, you know. I am here today. Neither, neither president, neither governor, neither ambassador. Neither food. Now, Israel, government, Anarastin. God, he is, man, no way, he be a way. Oh, that's a bad one. We will go now. On, I talk, soon, I talk. My name is, oh, say it this way. Mister Peter O'Beal. For Senator, Senator, the State. Or do you need to, or do you want? Oh, yeah, I am here today, I am here today. But His Excellency, Chief Doctor, William, Madam, who is going excellently well. Oh, yeah, my, my mass, 2022. Neither senatorial district. The most difficult we can have. Oh, sir, I will get it off. The central, you will not know. Neither not, in the, not, not as a court. But for the South. I am here, no, we sit for, not that. Neither sign, no, only, no, no. I am here, I am here, I am here. Oh, they, oh, they, they are kind. Oh, they are bad. I am here, hey, ever, we are very. Oh, no, they are bad, so bad. Oh, yeah, no, we are used to it. Soon, I, soon. Oh, we are here, we are here. Here, oh, not South, not South, I am here today. Not South Central. We think, oh, yeah, I am here, I am here today. The Rupa Party, not South, I am here today. Oh, yeah, I am here today, I am here today. Mother, since the start, the start, the. Oh, I am here today, I am here today. Here, I have intention, election, I am here today, I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. It's a, um, now, now. Now, states, I am here today. Oh, we, we, we are sitting on. It's a, um, I am here today. Oh, I am here today. Oh, I am here today. Oh, we are 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 here today. No, for me, I am here today. Say it, I am here today. I will not say, they are, I am here today. They are sitting on, oh, yeah, they are on. Our conscience, because conscience is a good move. Only truth, I hear. I am here today, I am here today. Not the large man, leave, I am here today. No, leave, I am the president, 2023. I love, I am sorry. I am here today, I am here today. They are all sorry. No, the foundation, the fortitude. I am here today, I am here today. In all the world, I am here today. You are, mobile, we are, we are, I am here today. Since you are here today. I, you, we are here today. Oh, we, no, I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. So, I do, I am here, I am here today. I will have the South, the United States. But you, I am here today. We are here today, we are here today. No, we are here, I am here today, I am here today. We are here today, we are here today. Oh, yeah, I am here today. So, we are here today. We are here today. We are here today, we are here today. But I, oh, we are, I see, we are here today. All the, we, we, we are here today. You are here today. I am here today, those that are states. We have, uh, my daughter, I have a teacher. Her life has some, right now. Every season, my people, oh, we are here. I will never destroy, we never give to you. I have chosen here, my land, my state. And I have chosen in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Oh, yeah, I am here, my own, you go. I, I, only all political parties. I send to our nation, to all political parties. For what I see, may I have my election. So, I will, I will, I will. Come on, the last night, oh, I see, the last night. I will fight, oh, we are here today. I will, I will, I am here today, I am here today. I am not. I am here today, my, um, oh, we are, we are here today. Oh, this is out, but I am here. Oh, we are here today. I am here today, I am here today. I am here today, the major one. Oh, we are here today, we are here today. I am here today, I am here today. Neither president, neither former PJs, Saint Roberts. Neither local government chairman, neither opponent, neither PJs. I am here today, I am here today. Oh, we are here today, I see, may I say. So, I, I am here today. I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. Oh, we are here today. We are here today, we are here today. In front, I am here, I am here today. So, I am here today, we, we are here today. I see it, I am here today, I am here today. I am here today. So, I, I am here today, I am here today. Come on, I am here today, I am here today. We are here today, I agree with. Oh, right, I am here, I am here today. No, I am here today, I am here today. But I am here today, I am here today. Oh, we are here today, we are here today. I am here today, I am here today. Oh, I am here today, I am here today. Oh, we are here today. May the last election, oh, we believe, we will, to run, we will, to survive. I am here today, I am here today. The rules, I am here today, I am here today. We are here, we are here. I am here today, I am here today. If you look at South. Oh, we are here today, the rules. Oh, we are here today, we are here today. I am here today. This is, it is, oh, I am here today. I next year, I am here today, I am here today. Neither not, I am here today, I am here today. Oh, we are here today, I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. Oh, we are here today, I am here today. Oh, we are here today, I am here today. Lose, I am here today, so. So, I am here today. Oh, we are here, I see, this is not good. I am here today, oh, we, we are here today. In the Anarastin. Oh, we think, maybe, oh, we are here today. But I do think, with His Excellency, we will have, so many. I am here today, I am here today. Oh, I am here today, I am here today. Oh, we are here today. Now, so, now, I am here, now, I am here. See, I am here today. But I, South Senator, so, 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 so. South Senator, so, so, so. No, we are here today, so. So, we are here today. Here, here. The South, we are here today. With the central. Oh, we are here today. And I have to be here, I am here today.
Amen.
I have to see, to go, I have to see, I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. Oh, we think, we, I do, we do. We, I am here today, we are here today. And so, I am here today. Oh, I am here, I, um, we are here. I am here, we are here, we are here, we are here, oh, we are here. So, I am here today, oh, we are here today. I am here, I am here today. You go. You go to special permission. I am here today, I am here today. You go, I am here today, in a special way. I am here, oh, we, the special, essence of the, you, security meeting. Oh, I am here, I am here today. I am here today, I am here today. Oh, you, I am here today, so many, so many. So, we, we are here today. Oh, we, we are here today. I am here today, I am here today. I can, I can, I can, you are here today. You are here today, President, you are here today. So, I am here, I am here today. But I, I am here today, I am here today. You go on this. I am here today.
I am here today.
I am here today.
I am here today.
I am here today. Always, the rule of law, in our society. I believe, I am here today, I am here today. I should, I am here, I am here today. You go, I am here, I am here. I am here.
I am here today.
I am here.
I am here today.
You go on this.
I am here today.
I am here today. Uh, I see, I mean, the, the fight.
... na kuso kweyong da wonye ngon telekula na mungo kolo lulu broka kashabi mungo moliye ge aywe kaini ni naru mabesu teyong ona telekula na soke tiwe kweyong telekula ye inoaka eh eh professor ge yu mani telekula ye na kuro ye eh ilu kweyong kaka koro one kasi two e force one was to the process area and we want to the development and there is a when I go there and I agree I'm not gonna open it here while I don't know but when you go for your development and this world you may uh listen to them we thank you and I give you for making an animal trap because I'm also a girl and I'm gonna get one of the only that you can do oh this is so we're gonna go to see who will be the leader by the way, we are there why can't we be there on top of the other thing and he is very sad you can't go back to one more than you want to we're gonna have this and he got this from you here and he wanted because who is the people who is the people pay the price before we did because you are not a soccer no, you're a deputy you're not a deputy you're so bad you're so bad see you a good one you're not making any money you're not getting more you're not getting higher money you get this don't want to be a part of it but I don't know I don't know so say again kaye ke yu you're not a human so I'm gonna kweyong omela kweyong aganu kweyong omelé kweyong yu rasa kweyong yu konye yeyu so ya kaye kaye love the floor I respect you as a president only I think so they're complicated you were like that everyone like this I am a everybody has something so I I am a woman I'm a woman ah eh la eh la I'm a woman I'm a woman I am a woman only about the process I'm a woman secretary I'm a resident eh secretary in the office I'm a uh uh my balloon I have here I share I have a little something of eh National Office Secretary of our business Doctor my name is he is my um yeah eh why eh they're busy uh I'm a eh you uh you see you do you do because I'm a they're like that I'm a I'm a so by the way you may do so they're bad you are and they're bad they're coming all of them some eh side eh who walking of the however from the most central district I'm a student I'm a I'm a president or some you may I'm a president you will we will say I'm a president oh my god nanti bosse oh my god nanti bosse oh my god I'm a president yeah I'm a president no I'm a president I'm a president they're bad eh they're bad eh they're bad eh National President I'm a president eh 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 I am a doctor say I have a disease you to although I'm a scientist I have a disease I'm a doctor I'm a president I'm a president I have a disease I'm a doctor I'm a president I'm a scientist I'm a doctor I'm a president 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 he's a president I'm a president I'm a president sir may please be proud of your name you're a president you're the president you're a president oh god okay for the same you will be a president I'm a chairman of the vision the state president I'm a resident as I'm a president the National Vice President I'm a resident one by a resident eh National President I'm a president the position of the union you play the layer of one all right God save Ireland you wanna this will be sorry I still I'm not a man you are a leader you can tell them I'm a government I'm a leader give us I'm a president you're a president you're a president I'm a president I'm a president you're a president I'm a president you're a president you're a president I'm a president you're a president I'm a president I'm a president you're a president I'm a president uh eh Mr. President you wanna as a leader of the vision best I can I'm a man you can say they are a company you're just I'm a president yeah I'm a president we are punished John Yeromah many say what do you want to say oh 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 record I have a and you are a good business evident you prefer a pass or a pass my darling I'm a president I'm a president the community who does that all the businesses are a good prosperous and deeper you will come on car I'm a I will go to you I'm a president I'm a president I'm a I'm a president I'm a president uh oh my god I put I was a woman I'm a this is a I'm a a pussy I'm a woman you're not a woman oh yeah I'm a woman I'm a woman oh eh why maybe we're who's we're come on I'm a I'm a they're a why eh why eh ma we're trying to eat eh oh 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 my dear kaye ma oh my god eh 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 don't eh nee na eh nee ba mi trina I'm a president so you do eh we're not oh my god nee so no 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 we're not a I'm a yeah oh he is a he is a who can eh oh she's I'm a president you go see what oh you see I'm a president they're a they're a eh 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 oh you see my god oh my god they're who they're I'm a this is a they're so young but you're a some it's good to hear oh my god you're not you're a man I'm a no I'm a I'm a oh yeah I'm a president I'm a president oh my god eh we're 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 a kaye oh I'm a president I'm a president I'm a president we're trying to eat eh oh we're so kaye eh 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 I'm a president we're a good business eh 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 for oh my god I'm a president eh this is I'm a president man of the world eh we see the House President I'm a oh my god I'm a president come on eh eh tiyo we're trying to eh we're 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 my god they're so they're they're I'm a president oh my god who do you new I eh is in oh yeah so I'm a president I'm a president the president eh 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 oh my god I'm a president may be eh my god eh eh I'm a president I'm a president I'm a president my name is my son oh we don't I'm a oh my god eh 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 oh my guy you we're my god eh 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 oh my god oh my god I'm a president I'm a president I'm a president they're so eh they're so they're so eh we're a we're a we're a my god we're a we're a I'm a president eh 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 I'm a president 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 oh my god eh 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 I'm a president I am oh good oh good I'm a president I'm a president oh this is[862.52]
Gubuwa mawahayi, mubwaiyi. Kaye me, kwele mubwu. Makana mwa kwele mubwu, kwele mubwu. Apa yu? Ndi sao mubwu. Ayah, mwa kwele mubwu. Na nsele mwa kwele mubwu. Owa yu kwele mubwu. Ma na yu be yu mwa kwa mwa. Ok. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Ni mwa kwa yu mwa. Ni mwa kwa yu mwa. Ayah, yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Mwajiliwa mwa kwa yu mwa. Deprai maal. Mwa kwele mubwu. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Na yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Sodha, oya mwa kwa yu mwa. Na yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Aha siya sae yu mwa. President Jipuwa Ngaas. Mwa kwa yu mwa. Nyatu. Mwa kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Ayah, mwa kwa yu mwa. Wedu.
Kwa yu mwa, mwa kwa yu mwa. Mwajiliwa mwa. Eh, ayah kwele mwa kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. 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 Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Ayah, yu mwa. Kwele mwa. Ayah, kwele mwa. So, yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Mwa kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Mwa kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Ayah, yu mwa. Mwa kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Ayah, yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Ayah, yu mwa. Ayah, mwa kwa yu mwa.
Ahnese.
Iwobi.
Ahnese.
Iwobi.
Iwobi.
Ahnese.
Eh, yu mwa. Ni wu. Eh. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Eh, yu mwa. Eh, yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Ni wu. Ahnese mwa kwa yu mwa. Mwa kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Ahnese. Mwa kwa yu mwa. Eh, leka. Chats. Iwobi. Ahnese. Ayah, yu mwa. All the. And this should not. Branch of ahnese. Yu mwa. Open button and. Fight. And you may. With you. Ahnese mwa. Na hati ni wu kwa yu mwa. Na sui na. Kwa yu mwa. Sui na. Sui na na gofuma. Na apka. From keep keep flying. Ni wu. Ni wu. Sa fana mwa kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Makana kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Na yu mwa. Owa yu mwa. Ayah, yu mwa. Yu mwa. Mwa yu mwa. Mwa yu mwa. Ka yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Ahkobo ni sui kwa tini na. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Sui na. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa.
Eh, yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Ahnese mwa kwa yu mwa. Ahnese mwa kwa yu mwa. Ka yu mwa. Ahnese mwa kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Two thousand and fifty years ago. When we go to Canada. Oh, kwa yu mwa. Mwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Oh, mwa yu mwa. Eh, yu mwa. Oh, mwa yu mwa. Ayah. So, kwa yu mwa. Oh, mwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa. Yu mwa. Yu mwa. Yu mwa. Yu mwa. So, yu mwa. Eh, ayah. Eh, ma yu mwa.
Ni wu kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa. Ahnese. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Oya yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Ahnese mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. National president. Ahnese yu mwa. Nation. Eh, we couldn't ignore. Our regard. Our selection. Sui na. Our song. Song. Makana a lot of this. The media. Even more white. And our mother. Their men. Their men go. But they think we're so na. Ni wu. But oh, they're busy. Our message. And us. And they are. So, we are sad. We're so. And we are very sorry. So, we are sorry. Now, we want to have a vote. Must want to have a vote. Even if you are a member of our group. Well, it's all about this. For our ahnese people. I have few of them. Some of you. And I have a man who gave it. He put his name. Our party may have support. Even the group. South. Oh, please. Now, we are missing out on that. Ahnese spring. And if someone chose a guy. Ah, they have. Oh, we are not. Oh, please, south. And you want to know. Ah, I'm sorry. I don't know. So, you do not know. Are you only one? Oh, you. So, I can't see. The power. Oh, you.
Eh, yu mwa. Ahnese. You are young. You are young. You are young. We are young. We are young. Oh, we are serious. Oh, you are not. I can't believe you. My name is. You are very good. So, I am. Thank you very much. They call me here. Date nineteen two. Twenty twenty one. The people of Anna Maros. The current district. One of the host system. And in the world wide. Anna President. As a well attended. Now home. It's. Have to be. Saturday. Two twenty twenty one. I thought it had a murder. And leave. Resolved as per. One. That is only chapter. And prompted as a last warning. To written. In Anna West in twenty seventeen. With the total. Enrichment of Anna West. As your foundation. Our rulers. Anna West. Association of Congress. The state ever has cancer. And our ahnese. Who are we. Anna West. Is their fans. Every. Their parties of society system. In every one state. Where are they. One. That will be for election. Two. It will reduce expenses. On voting and violence. Three. It will minimize violence. Three. It will minimize cost of education. Two. That the line will be very short. The organization position. May report for the organization election. In November. In Anna West. Is so. To the south. In current. District. That all political parties in Anna West. Are ignoring. The truth. Eh, the material and leaders. From Anna West. To the general. Zone. Four. And finally. That any political party in Anna West. That invites this unanimous resolution. Will be wrong. Will not be wrong. In the interest of the state. And as such. The party was called each. Anna West. Where. Thank you. Your attention. Thank you. Please, you may go. To the next stage. Seven three. Sa Kimano. Look up for the stage seven. Thank you very much.
Balo yu mwa. Owa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Owa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Owa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Owa yu mwa. Owa yu mwa. Yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Ni wu kwa yu mwa. Anna Maros. Owa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Owa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Ni wu kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Ma yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kaye mwa. Owa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Abo. Ni wu kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Ni wu kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Ni wu kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Anna West. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. So, so, yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Retire. Yu mwa. Owa yu mwa. Retire. Yu mwa. Ma yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Abo yu mwa. Abo yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Ni wu. Oh, tab. Eh. Oh, tab. Namso. And they. Kwa yu mwa. Oh, yu mwa. Ma yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Uh huh. Ni wu kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Na yu mwa. Ni wu kwa yu mwa. Owa yu mwa. Na yu mwa. Yu mwa. Kwa 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 yu mwa. Yu mwa. Oh, tab. Owa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa. Eh, yu mwa.
Ahnese. Iwobi. Ahnese. Iwobi. Iwobi. Yu mwa. I have to do it. Only game. You are obviously. Eh. And we. My. I can do. Other walking. Of the. True abortion. Of the community. Eh. Oh. Yu mwa. Ni wu. Yu mwa. Yu mwa. Yu mwa. Ni wu kwa yu mwa. Owa yu mwa. Owa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Ni wu. Yu mwa. Asa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Owa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Eh, owa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Na yu mwa. Ahnese mwa. Yesh. Peretu. Yee jee mes. Ahnese president. Ayah, yu mwa. Owa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa. Owa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Ayah, yu mwa. Yu mwa. Ayah, yu mwa. Kaye mwa. Yu mwa. Yu mwa. Yu mwa. Ma yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Ni wu kwa yu mwa. Anna Maros. Anna Maros. Ni wu kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa. Ma yu mwa. Ni wu kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Kaye yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. No, no. Kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa. In your. Yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Oh. Ni wu kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Na yu mwa. Ni wu kwa yu mwa. Mwa kwa yu mwa. Ni wu kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Orang south. South kwa yu mwa. Orang setna. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Ma yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Ayah, yu mwa. Na yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa. Yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa. Ni wu. Na yu mwa. Yu mwa. Eh. Yu mwa. Eh. Eh, kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Owa yu mwa. Anna Maros. Kwa yu mwa. Na yu mwa. Owa yu mwa. Aba ba yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Ma yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Aba yu mwa. Ayah, yu mwa. Owa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Oh, yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Ma yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Owa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Ma yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Ma yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Owa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Ma yu mwa. Owa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Anna Maros. So, yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Anna Maros. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Ma yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Anna Maros. Kwa yu mwa. Owa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Owa yu mwa. Ma yu mwa. Ma yu mwa. So, yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Ni wu kwa yu mwa. Asa kwa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Ah, Jesus. Kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa. Ni wu kwa yu mwa. Eh. Ayah, yu mwa. Oh, yu mwa. Yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Ayah, yu mwa. Yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Aba yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. So, yu mwa. Yu mwa. Yu mwa. Yu mwa. Yu mwa. Aba yu mwa. Aba yu mwa. Eh. Ni wu. Kwa yu mwa. Aba yu mwa. Ma yu mwa. Owa yu mwa. Eh, yu mwa. Eh, so. Yu mwa. Yu mwa. Ahnese. 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 Eh. Yu mwa. Yu mwa. Owa yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa. All you say must say. All you say must say. All you say. Ne. Oh, good. Yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa. Eh. Ayah, yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Ayah, yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Aba yu mwa. Kwa yu mwa. Sui na. You say. Oh, yu mwa. Owa yu mwa. Ayah. Si siya. Mwa kwa yu mwa. Si la. Mwa kwa yu mwa. Yu mwa.